Rockdale County Board of Education is in order. And the first item on the agenda is our inspirational message. And I'd like to call on the students from High Tower Trail Elementary.
Good evening. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Autry. We are the Student Leadership Academy from High Tower Trail Elementary. I'm Timothy Mitchell, and my fellow members are: Christopher Kell, Grant Tomlinson, Tori Johnson, Diana Garibet, and Anaya Drummond. We are going to recite the poem "The Power of I" by Anonymous.
The power of I. I will do more. I'm only one, but I am one.
I cannot do everything, but I can do something. And what I can do, I ought to do. What I ought to do, by the grace of God, I will do.
I will do more than belong. I will participate. I will do more than care. I will help. I will do more than believe. I will practice.
I will do more than be fair. I will be kind. I will do more than dream. I will work.
I will do more than teach. I will inspire. I will do more than earn. I will enrich.
I will do more than give. I will serve. I will do more than live. I will grow. I will do more than talk. I will act.
I will be more than good. I will be good for something.
In closing, we would like to thank all the members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Autry for all you do for the students, teachers, and parents of Rockdale County.
Thank you. Now we shall stand and have a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We don't have a need for executive session. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda as presented.
Seven, six.
I have a motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Yance, to approve the agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, and none opposed. We have next certificates and awards. No, we have a school presentation. I'm sorry, got ahead of myself. Of Mr. Middleton from Edwards Middle School.
Good evening, Superintendent Autry, Chairman Barksdale, esteemed members of the Board, esteemed members of Cabinet, and all the guests here tonight. When I was told that I needed to do the presentation for Edwards Middle School, it was hard for me to narrow down what I would talk about. Because, not to brag, but I guess I am bragging a little bit, there are a lot of wonderful things that go on at Edwards every day. But I decided to focus on two of the newer things that are happening at Edwards that's really having a positive impact on our staff and our students. I want to start off with the EMS millionaires. And for years and years, we've always tried to come up with ways to get kids to read more. We've done all kinds of things. We've come up with all kinds of attempts. But it's always hard to get kids to read and to keep reading and have that love for reading. So I had a new teacher coming to my building last year, Ms. Kimberly Newman, who could not be here tonight. And I wish she could be here because this was really her baby. She said, "Well, let's have a Millionaires Club." So I said, "Well, tell me what that's about." The Millionaires Club is a reading recognition program. It began for us at the beginning of the 2011-2012 school year. The purpose is to develop increased love of independent reading. So we want our kids reading. Not just the text that they have to read in the classroom. We want them to read all the time. Research shows that the amount of free reading done outside of school has consistently been found to relate to growth in vocabulary, reading comprehension, verbal fluency, and general information. This came to us at the right time because now as we're transitioning from Georgia Performance Standards to Common Core Georgia Performance Standards, the reading and literacy component is stressed heavily in every single content area. So if we can improve these skills for our students with reading, it's going to impact achievement across the board. All the students in the school were invited to participate. All books read for the Millionaires Club had to be in the student's individual ZPD range. And basically, what that is, is that's the zone of proximal development. So it's basically a range of books that will challenge you but will not cause frustration. And they all must be accelerated reader books. We use the Accelerated Reader Program to keep up with the amount of words. Once students complete the corresponding book quiz with a passing score, they receive credit for all the words read in the book, which is their individual word count. So the way we structured it is about every 50,000 points, we kind of told the kids, "Here's where you need to be." I mean, 50,000 words. "Here's where you need to be. Here's where you need to be." But we put these big milestones in place. So once you hit 250,000 words, we had our first celebration activity, which was an ice cream social. You can see at that point, we had about 46 students. Our next milestone, which was 500,000 words, they had a movie day. At that point, we had 51 students, so we increased a little bit. But once we got to 750,000 words, it's getting tough because that means you've been reading and reading and reading. So we went down to 42 students. And then, when we hit the mark of 1 million, we had 41 students who still remained. Those 41 students became the inaugural members of our Millionaires Club. And I think it was fantastic to get 41 kids to read a million words. The top student was recognized at our Honor Day Assembly, and our top student read over 4 million words. And I think the biggest thing helping us going forward is at the very end, when we had the cookout, as the kids were coming by and they saw these kids eating at this cookout, and then they saw that the principal was cooking the food, they were all like, "Goodness gracious, why can't I be a part of this?" I said, "Well, if you read a million words next year, this can be you too." So as the kids saw the celebration, they were excited. What I want to tell you that's not up here is, when we had our Awards Day Ceremony, when we saw the kids who were receiving academic awards, they were the same kids who had read a million words. So there is a correlation. It does help achieve. So we're very excited about that. The last thing I want to talk about, and this is something really different for us, and I call it silence is golden, quiet transitions at EMS. If you have ever spent any time in a middle school, there are times when you have maybe 1,000 students moving at the same time. It's usually quite loud. As a staff, we started talking about it. And I said, "You know what? It's kind of loud. And it's kind of dangerous." Because if something happened and I needed to give instructions to everybody, I don't think everybody could hear me. I said, "It also affects all the classrooms. If you have noise outside of your classroom when you're trying to teach, that makes it tough for the kids in the classroom to learn." So here's how we structured it. When the kids arrive, they all arrive and they funnel into the comment area where most of our kids eat breakfast. The minute they leave the comments area, they're silent. And they proceed down the hallway silently. Then they also travel through the building silently whenever they leave their grade level hallways. So if they're going to computer lab, if they're going to the media center, if they're going to lunch, silently. They also travel silently when they return from their connections classes. And our connections teachers actually escort the kids back down to their grade level hallways. However, when there are locker breaks, we still let the kids have a little quiet conversation because you need some conversation during the day. The greatest thing about this is, we never presented it to the kids with a punitive aspect to it. We talked to them about how important it is and the benefits, but we never said, "If you're not quiet, we're going to punish you. Or we're going to do this, or we're going to do that." And the beautiful thing is that it's working and they're doing it. And we're in our third week. We're completing our third week of school, and it's still working. And a lot of times with things like this, especially when it's new, it's hard to get it going. But our kids have really done a great job of it. What I want to talk to you about is the impact. We've seen a huge decrease in inappropriate behavior in the hallway, a huge decrease in student disciplinary referrals, better student focus once they enter the classroom because they're kind of quiet and they're kind of in that frame of mind. So when they enter the room, it's not like you have to get them to calm down. They just come in and they're ready to learn. Increased student safety. If I had to give directions or anything for anything that came up, everyone could hear. It's quite quiet and quite controlled. Positive effects on school culture and climate. I can't tell you how many of my teachers have come to me and said, "This is fantastic." And a lot of them said, "You know, I didn't really think this would work in the beginning. I didn't think we can get them to do this." But they tell me the kids are different when they come in the room. They are under control. We don't fight. We don't fight. We just get down to business. I want to read, before I leave, I want to read a letter from one of my teachers. And this is one of my connections teachers. And if you don't know the structure of middle school, connections classes are the classes they go to like PE, Health, Family, Consumer Science. Well, a lot of times on the connections hallway, you have all these kids moving and they're not with their core teachers. And they tend to get loud sometimes. They tend to want to play because they think it's connection time. It's fun time. I already did math, language arts, science, social studies. Now it's time to play. So this is from one of my connections teachers. "I wanted to take a minute to tell you that I really have appreciated the silent transitions. I have to admit, when I first heard the idea and my private thoughts, I wasn't sure it would work. I always harbored the idea that kids somehow deserve social time in the hallways. I thought it might be unfair to expect them to be quiet all day. After all, don't they need an emotional release before they sit in another desk for another 50 minutes? I have changed my mind and my attitude. I must confess that I never thought about the benefits of the quiet transition. Not only does it essentially require all of us, and us being the staff in the building, to be on our game, but it has cut down on so much foolishness. Noise, drama, horseplay, et cetera. I cannot tell you how shocking it is to have 200 EMS kids pass by a room and those inside only know they are there because you catch a glimpse of movement outside the door. I'm very proud of how well this is working. And I think that the students are honestly happier with the lack of interactions that stir trouble in the hallways. It really contributes to the culture that I think we all want at EMS, the culture of taking education seriously. I can tell you that our connections department is certainly committed to making this work from day one to the last day of school. I've seen my connections peers taking this very seriously. Thanks for encouraging this to happen. It makes coming to work so much more rewarding and efficient. Thank you."
I'd like to say something to you here. The reading and this problem are some of the best ideas that are working, I've heard since I've been on the board. I congratulate you on this. It makes me so happy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Miles, certificates and awards.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I would like to ask our chairman and superintendent to come down front and help me with tonight's recognitions. I think someone's trying to come in. Maybe it's Patty. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would like to begin by bringing up some students from RCA, FCC LA. Elena Thomas, if you will make your way up. And Carly, Carly's not with us. Okay, so Ms. Shannon, if you will join us up front. You get front and center stage. FCC LA STAR Events, and the STAR stands for Students Taking Action With Recognition, are competitive events in which members are recognized for proficiency and achievement in chapter and individual projects, leadership skills, and career preparation. STAR Events offer individual skill development and application of learning through the following activities: cooperative, teams work to accomplish specific goals; individualized, members work alone to accomplish specific goals; and competitive, individual or team performance measured by an established set of criteria. Elena Thomas created a scrapbook detailing the RCA Fall Festival. She then presented the scrapbook to judges using a very creative speech, starting with, "It was a dark and stormy night." "Super fun and a lot of really hard work," says her instructor. Elena won a gold medal in the occupational category for the Chapter Service Project Manual Event. Congratulations. And Carly Gumm, who could not be here with us tonight, won a silver medal in the occupational category for the Early Childhood Event. And as always, we would like to express our appreciation for instructors and for their leadership, and their outstanding leadership in leading our students to these national events. Thank you. Ms. Shannon, is it how? I said it right? Thank you. And congratulations. And if our chairman and superintendent will join you, I'll take a picture. Mr. Dinsmore, I'll take a better picture. Congratulations. Oh, come on. Come on over. All right, Madeline, I'm not going to make you come stand up here this entire time that I'm reading about you by yourself. So if you want to just sit tight, I'll just talk about you and then I'll have you come up. Last week, our board members may recall that I explained how we gave out the superintendent's academic awards at our administrators' startup meeting in July, and that we filmed the award celebration thinking that somehow we could digitally share portions of it with all employees. Our bright idea was that we would give each school a video clip showing the introductory comments from our superintendent, and then only the part when their respective administrator was presenting an award for their school. Now, keep in mind, we have many schools who received more than one award but at different times throughout the celebration. I'm giving you all this information so that hopefully you can understand the magnitude of work it was going to take to edit the film of this event so that 20 schools didn't have to watch all two hours or stop and start and fast-forward to their particular part. My colleague, Anne Principay, offered the time and talent of her daughter, Madeline, convincing me that she was up for the challenge. And it took some convincing. Because my dear Mr. Dinsmore was out of town at a conference, so he got off. Madeline quickly accepted, well, I don't know about quickly. Madeline accepted the challenge, and with only two days to get it done, had all of it edited and a DVD ready to deliver to each school in time for their first pre-planning meeting. I personally cannot thank her enough for her work. And of course, I also appreciate her mom for all the work she does for our department. Madeline, please come forward. Madeline is in the ninth grade at Heritage High School and is an excellent candidate for the next group that I'm about to talk about. I did. Did you write that down? Thank you very, very much. I knew you'd like that referral. Okay, Madison, did you make it? There you are. All right. Madison, please join Devon and Mr. Dinsmore up front. You have to, well, I'm going to talk about you whether you come up here or not. The Skills USA Chapter at the Rockdale Career Academy took its broadcast news team of four students to Nationals in Kansas City, Missouri in June. These students are two-time state gold medalists and placed fifth in the nation this year. This is a dedicated team that looks forward to competing at the national level again with plans to bring home the gold. This year, Madison Laxtegala, Laxtegala, did I say that right? And Carly Wilson will be third-time news anchors on the team along with two new team members who will replace graduates Devon McPherson and Cameron Knight. In addition, Carly Wilson is president of the Skills USA Chapter at RCA and has recently been elected as the Skills USA Georgia State President. She is unable to be here with us tonight, but she's represented Rockdale County and the state of Georgia very well. Since June, she has already attended four leadership trainings and has spent nine days in Kansas City, Missouri. She participated in the Leverage Leadership Training, where she worked with state officers from all over the country. And she still has much to do this year, such as teaching a public speaking class to 500 Skills USA students in St. Simons and speaking in front of over 3,000 people by the time her term is over in March. As always, we also want to show our appreciation to Mr. James Dinsmore with the Digital Video and Recording Arts Department at Rockdale Career Academy for his outstanding leadership with yet another nationally-ranked Skills USA team from our district. Thank you and congratulations. And just so everybody knows, Devon was an intern in my department last year, and I get Madison this year. Congratulations. Ms. Shannon, that concludes my recognitions for tonight.
We'll take a short recess and congratulate everybody at this time. Okay, at this time, I'll call the meeting back to order. Next item is recognition of the students' comments. I have no cards at this time. And, you know, I've never known James Schiff would be anywhere. He didn't ever come in. You don't want to start that, will you? Next item is superintendent's cabinet reports. Mr. Autry. Superintendent's cabinet's updates will consist of Office of Financial Services, Mr. Davis, and I will follow with Superintendent Self.
Phil, I think we need some WD-40.
Good evening, Chairman Barksdale, Superintendent Autry, members of the board. Office of Financial Services has quite a few financial reports. We did finish our year-end closing. We have transmitted all of our financial reports to the state. And this afternoon, Mr. Autry did sign off on those, so we're in very good shape now. Can you see if you open that first one, please, ma'am? This is our June 30th financial report. If you'll scroll down, please send me to the balance sheet. Thank you. You can see total assets at year-end was $24,650,000. I'll scroll down just a little further. We ended with a $9.8 million fund balance. As we'll see when I get over into the revenue and expense. Send me if you'll scroll just a little further, please, ma'am. See that, bear with me while I take off my glasses to read and then put them back on. The revenues, we ended up slightly more than what we budgeted. We ended up at 100.25% of the projected revenue, which was $126,964. If I think with that bigger font, we can see that a little better. And then revenues, excuse me, the expenses ended up at 100.11% of the budget, which was $136.68. The net revenue and expense was $3.7 million. We had projected drawing down fund balance by $3.8 million. If you remember, that was part from excess VIBA and the edge jobs money that we received in the previous year that we basically banked to help with this year's financials. So you can see the difference there is $174,000 in our ending fund balance. So all in all, pretty good financials. We did end up with a 7.54% ending fund balance. Obviously, we'd like that higher, but with the financial reality of what we've been facing the last few years, I feel pretty decent about that. And we will do the July financial also shortly. Are there any questions about the year-end financials?
Lee, how much did fuel play into student transportation increase?
The increase there, Darlene, you see that we were over budget. The majority of that is after we adopt the budget. I'm going to answer your question indirectly. That big increase was because after we adopt the budget, the state awarded funds to buy buses. So that amount is over mainly because of the fact that we spent $700,000 on eight buses. And that was due to the fact that we got those. And that's partly why the state revenue is higher than what we projected also is because that revenue and expense, we don't know we're going to get until they sell bonds and it's after we adopt our budget. I'll have to check the line items to tell specifically with the gas costs. Unless, my friend Phil, do you know that off the top of your head? Okay, I'll get that and email it to everyone. I'm not sure what that component is. That might have had some of it, but the majority of it was due to the eight buses. Any other questions? Moving on to the year-end splash report. Think I'll remember it just in case. You can see, this is the, we're getting close to wrapping up our Splash Two projects. I've been doing this six years and we finally realized that we could make it bigger and easier to read by doing that. So thank you, Cindy.
Well, you missed half the page, though. So if you tell me where you want to go, I'll...
If you scroll down towards the bottom, you can see that's all the projects. But if you scroll just a little, oops, not that far. What I think is the most important part of this, you can see that $2.1 million? That is the remaining funds. We are close to finishing out those projects. We are close to finishing out those projects. As we finish those off, we'll continue to draw that on down. And if you look at that page, just a little to the left, please, Cindy. I'm sorry, look through. And then up a little, up to you can see the March of 2008. You'll notice that, as we know, reported this previously, we did finish collecting the SPOSS on SPOSS II. That's when we had sales tax collections. That was before the economy turned south, and we did complete that in March of 2008. It was originally slated to run through March of 2000...Excuse me, through June of 2008, but we did collect all the revenue for that project...or for that SPOSS three months early. And Cindy, if we can move forward to SPOSS III, please, ma'am.
Is it in the same document or new document?
I think it's the next one. Yeah, that's the bottom of the page, I'm sorry. Scroll down just...I'm sorry, a little bit back up. That looks like the same document. Yeah, you opened the same...I'm sorry, there it is right there. Thank you, it is in the same one. You can see that we...Scroll down just a little. Thank you. SPOSS III, we're still going pretty strong on that. We do have a $28,100 and basically $107,000. When you add SPOSS II and III together, we've got $30,290,000. As you're well aware, that can only be used for capital expenditures. They cannot be used for operating costs. That's our buildings and equipment, things of that nature, and retirement debt, which we did use in the first SPOSS. If you scroll down, if you look at collections. You can see the totals at the bottom, Cindy, would be great. Right there, thank you. We have collected $58,38,502. The projection for that timeframe is $78 million. We've been running right around that 75% collection over the past probably 18 months, which is the 74.39%. We do anticipate the state capital outlay dollars, that we will build all the projects in SPOSS III, so that's a good thing that we were conservative and we did not include the state revenue. Are there any questions on the SPOSS III report? This is our normal report.
What was the...Lee?
I'm sorry.
It was in salaries for the general fund, so what are those salaries that are paid on SPOSS?
You can use the part of the...I'm sorry, you can use it for the capital expenditure. So some of the salary for the construction manager, the construction...Bruce, part of his salary, and then we've got, I think, two full-time employees that work basically on nothing but that. So it has to be something we can directly attribute to SPOSS. We couldn't charge a portion of my salary or Phil's or anyone's like that. It has to be someone directly involved in the construction. Thank you. You're welcome. Are there any other questions? I've got a lot of them tonight. I apologize, but with year-end, we have them all getting done at the same time. You open that one, please, Cindy. That's our grant listing. This is our quarterly grant report, and it's for the year-end. It is not the grant report that we looked at last week. That's our competitive grants. This is part of our consolidated grant application. It's our federal dollars, mostly federal dollars, some state dollars. It's our Title I, our Title 6B, CTAE, funds like that. So you can see all those different projects. And if you look on that second page, you will see that we've been awarded $14.6 million, and that's the...right there, in the middle of the spreadsheet. Thank you, Cindy. Again, this is the one...I'll do another report in October for the first quarter of this fiscal year. Are there any questions on the consolidated grant? And those, as you are well aware, they're for specific students. Title I is the socioeconomic. 6B is the special needs students. CTE is the vocationals. They're for service students. Okay. If there's no questions about that, let's move on to food services.
Sorry, you had your hand on the...It sounded like you were moving the mouse that you had...
I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and make a couple of comments while Cindy's pulling that out to keep us moving. School Nutrition, it's one of the ones that we do report quarterly to you. As always, Ms. Lawrence has done a great job of not only providing good meals to our students, but of doing a very good job of taking care of the financial aspect of the food services. Thank you, Cindy. If we look at the balance sheet for food services, you'll see that we have $3.5 million in assets, obviously the same in liabilities and equity, and our ending fund balance there is $2.9 million. Looking at the revenue and expense. We received $9,997,000. You do a better job with your bar than I do with the red dots, so thank you, Cindy. Cindy's got it in line. And then we spent $9,728,000, excess of $268,000, revenue over expense, and you can see that Peggy's fund balance increased from the $2.6 million to the $2.9 million. Are there any questions about the school nutrition report? Let's move on to the July, please, Cindy, general fund financials. And we are one month into our fiscal year. You can see total assets, $19.3 million. Our fund balance is down...Scroll just a little further, please, Cindy. Thank you. To $3.8 million. I do anticipate the same as last year, that we will have to do a TAN next month. We'll bring it to you. That's the tax anticipation note. Brad and I will work to do the cash flow statements, and we'll have that for you in all likelihood at the September meeting. We move on to the revenue and expense. You'll see local revenues at...I'm sorry, revenues at 3.7%, $4.5 million. I saw Dan Ray at the I Can Do That meeting. Dan told me that with the pills and things like that with the digest, we actually had a negative property tax correction this month from the digest, but because of the motor vehicle, we did at least receive $16,000. So I thought that was interesting, that we actually had negative revenue on the property tax side. But you see also the expenditures, $10.5 million, 8.42% of the year. That's a little bit higher than the 8.33%, but you think about it, a lot of our non-salary expenditures, you kind of do more at the early part of the year when you're getting ready for the school year to start, so we don't think that's gonna be a problem at all. Are there any questions about the July?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, you have a question.
Sure.
How much do you think you're gonna have to get up for the tax?
It'll probably...Mr. McKinney, last year we did six. I anticipate it'll probably come from that, somewhere between six and eight. So once we do the cash flow statement, then what we do obviously is we project the revenue and expense for the next three months, 'cause it has to be paid off prior to December 31st, and then we will, in all likelihood, pay it off in December. And what we usually do with that, as we mentioned before, we only pay interest for the number of days we have the loan. We set it up where if the collections come in early, we can pay it as soon as we get them out. So I'll get you the more exact figure, obviously, before the September meeting, but I'm guessing between six and eight.
Okay, just another question.
Sure.
We don't have any surplus pot of money for...
I wish we did.
Unexpected.
The ending fund balance, and that's why we like the ending fund balance to be close to 15%. I mentioned we're around a 7.5%, but with the declining state revenue, declining digest, we haven't had that kind of fund balance in four or five years. At one point, that's one of the reasons, because before you were on the board, Mr. McKinney, that's how we opened campus and did some of those things, 'cause we...and expanded the Alpha Academy, we had over the 15%. So we took some of those funds and did the renovations, and that's how those programs got started.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
But, Mr. McKinney, for years before that, we had always had to go out for TANS as well. There was only a four-year period?
I think so. I think the before...
So it's not an uncommon thing?
And quite frankly, I would say just off the top of my head as a guess, probably 80-plus percent of the school systems in Georgia have to do TANS, because the same thing's happened across Georgia that's happened in Rockdale. The percentage actually, I'm sure, is higher than that, but I won't be concerned with it. You're welcome. Let's move on to Cindy, please, the July SPOSS report. On the home stretch.
Is this last one?
Yes, ma'am. The SPOSS II, actually, I was reviewing it with Mr. Autry today. There were very little change between the year-end and the July one. I think it only...The balance went down about $1,000, so we paid one very small deal. So there wasn't a lot of change between year-end and end. So you see the balance, scroll down just a little bit. Right there, thank you. Remaining balance now at the end of July is $2182,000. Cindy, if you'll scroll down, please. I'm not gonna make the same exact comments I just did about ending in 2008, so if we can scroll down to SPOSS III, I can show the changes there, please, ma'am.
This is three.
Yeah, just a little bit further. There, perfect. Thank you. You can see our SPOSS III ending fund balance end of July is now $29,314,000. The combination SPOSS II and III is $31,496, so real close to the $31.5 million. And if we'll scroll down to the collections, please, Cindy. We are...a little further?
Right there, thanks.
We are now at $59,264,000, which is oddly enough, with that additional month, it's still exactly at 74.39% of the projection. And same comments as the SPOSS in June, obviously it can only be used for capital expenditures and things of that nature. That was a lot of financial. Was there any questions on SPOSS III or July?
Yeah, I'd like to just tell you.
Sure.
Means it's a $29 million. We don't...That's not money we have, that's anywhere, I mean, is it? I mean, it's not...
Yes, it's money that we have, but it can only be used for capital expenditures, Don.
Where is it?
It's in an investment account. It's in Georgia Fund I, which is a local investment pool that governments in Georgia can use.
But do they pay interest on that?
Yes. Not much interest.
But the interest can't be used by...
No.
Okay.
No. Actually, there was an attorney's...
The SPOSS is designated, but the voters...There was a list of projects that the voters approved, and they approved the collection of this money, and it can only be...We say designated, but it's designated for certain projects that the people of this county voted on, that they were willing to levy the tax for. And all these funds have to be already obligated for those use.
And put in the interest, that would replace...
Yeah.
Yes, and I'd make one that...The path, I think you were going down, Mr. McKinney, some school systems in Georgia did that four years ago. They borrowed money from their SPOSS fund to replace a TAN for their local...their general operating account, and the state officer wrote them up as a finding that that's not a legitimate SPOSS expenditure, which is what Mr. Markstel was saying. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for that comprehensive year-end report, and I also want to thank all of the cabinet for your extensive reports last week, last Thursday at the work session. Appreciate the work you did and all of your staff did to present that information. Pursuant to that, we did have a request from Ms. Young for some additional information regarding the academic report. You do have a CD that we burned for you that has any and all information you would ever want to know regarding our summative performance for all of our schools. I do want to communicate to the board, I had the opportunity to meet with several of my peers Monday, Tuesday. We had new board training in Macon, I'm sorry, new superintendents training in Macon. Had the opportunity to meet the newest superintendents from around the state, as well as be trained with Sis Henry from GSVA along with Herb Garrett. Certainly an unlikely experience, but not one that I was surprised by based on the experience that I've had with this board and in my tenure here in Rockdale County. Also, yesterday, I attended the Metro Rita Board, Metro RISA Board of Directors meeting, in which I am a part of, along with all Metro RISA superintendents. There was a lot of discussion there with regards to how M RISA can support us, our district, and our teachers. But there was also extensive conversations, as you might imagine, with regards to the constitutional amendment dealing with charter schools. Mr. Alvin Willbanks, you may note, is the superintendent of Gwinnett County School System, spoke a long time about the impact or potential impact of the charter school amendment, and certainly gave us an opportunity to have our own input with him as well. Based on that, I do want to take a bit of time, if the board will indulge me today, to stand our position here in Rockdale County. I want to commend our state superintendent for his stance that he took, but before I get into our position as well, I think it might be necessary for the public at large and also the board, let me just go over a bit of background information for you, where we came from, where we are now, and certainly our position with regards to Rockdale County. Last year, you may recall, that the Georgia Supreme Court struck down a 2008 law that allowed the state, independent of local boards, to create and fund state charter schools. Why state? Because the state constitution says that local school boards, this school board, and local communities have the exclusive authority to decide how they govern their school systems, and if charter schools is something that the local board approves, then that's certainly the right and the obligation of the board. The 2008 law also allows state to redirect local school funding, taxpayer funding, to those state charter schools without the approval of the local Board of Education as well. Where are we now? Supporters of the charter school movement, and I say independent charter school movement, want to amend the Georgia Constitution, and this is being done through House Resolution 1162 combined with HB or House Bill 797. Let me just give you brief bullet points on those two pieces of legislation. November 6, 2012, on the ballot, the ballot will read as follows. Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended to allow state or local approval of public charter schools upon the request of local communities? That is the verbiage that you will see on the local ballot. Now, when you first glance, that certainly sounds as though that would be something that local communities would want. Let me tell you the facts behind this, and again, I'm a public official, so again, all I can do is relay facts to you without prescribing which way one person votes or which way you need to decide, but I can give you our district's position. This bill recreates the Charter School Commission that was outlawed by the Supreme Court decision. This commission will have the authority to approve independent state charter schools without the local approval of local boards of education. In addition, from a funding mechanism, HB 797, which is the associated House Bill, lays out the parameters of how the state will create independent state charter schools and the additional taxpayer funding formula that was the state will use to fund those schools. So again, they're creating or proposing a dual system, one that is approved by the state legislator or state entity that's in charge of making those decisions, along with our current public school system. I have attached in your...on your agenda, the statement or brief statement from the superintendent. Again, I wish to commend the state superintendent for taking the stance, and certainly appreciate his support of public school systems and the things that he mentioned. I'll give you a few bullets that I thought were extremely appropriate for us in this day and time, that he said, and then I'll close with our position here in Rockdale County public school system. The state superintendent, John Garge, fully support the creation of high-quality charter schools for Georgia students, but after careful consideration of what's best for all students, I've decided to take a position on this issue. I cannot support the creation of new and costly state bureaucracies that take away local control of schools and unnecessarily duplicates the good work being done by this board. and unnecessarily duplicates the good work being done by this board, our staff and the state DOE as well. Until all of our public school students are in school for a full one hundred and eighty days, and we're fortunate, I will mention in context, when I met with those superintendents, both Metro and those new superintendents, we're very fortunate here. Mr. Davis just mentioned our year-end financials, but we're very fortunate here with regards to calendar adjustment days, with regards to student days. Most of those systems had between eight and ten calendar adjustment days for teachers and many of those systems had between one hundred and forty to one hundred and sixty days for students. So again, we're happy that we're able to continue with our one hundred and eighty days for our students. But at current moment, we do have three calendar adjustment days for all of our staff, not just teachers. So again, we're fortunate, but we're feeling the pain as well of the economic downturn. Until all of our public students are in school for a full one hundred and eighty days, until essential services like transportation, students who report can return to one hundred percent, superintendent, state superintendent said we should not redirect one more dollar away from Georgia's public schools. Again, that's a very powerful statement and one that we, as a public school system and me personally, as the superintendent of this school system, appreciate his stance. I would like for public record to articulate our stance here, and this is not one that the board will be surprised. We've had these conversations before. You've had these conversations with the mayor superintendent as well. But I also want to make sure that we have an official stance that leaves no doubt as to where we stand as a board and where we stand as a school district. Rockdale County Public Schools value innovation and creativity in how we educate the students in this community. Rockdale Career Academy, Rockdale Virtual Campus and Rockdale Open Campus, as well as Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology are tangible examples of this concept. RCPS supports high-quality charter schools approved by our local Board of Education. In fact, that's exactly what RCA is. It is a charter school in itself, but governed by this board. In fact, the RCPS strategic plan clearly specifies the creation of additional charter, magnet and non-traditional education options for our students and families. For RCPS, this is not a matter about charter schools. This is a fundamental issue that this amendment overrides the constitutional authority of our locally elected boards of education to make educational decisions deemed best for our local community. In addition, a dual taxpayer funding system will be created, which would further perpetuate the five billion dollars already lost to school systems statewide in the state of Georgia and the fifty-three point nine million dollars lost particularly specifically to Rockdale County Public Schools through austerity reductions to public education. RCPS does not support any initiative or legislation that infringes on the decision-making authority of our locally elected Board of Education. That is our position. Again, we are proponents of charter schools, but we are proponents of charter schools within the authority of this board. Thank you, Mr. Jimmy.
Mr. Superintendent, would you mind stating exactly how much it costs per student for education in Rockdale County?
Lee, do you have that per pupil expenditure?
I'll give the exact one, but off the top of my head, it's right around, I think, seventy-eight.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, around eight thousand.
Yeah. Well, it was eight thousand, five hundred, but with certain things. So the general public may not understand that if a charter school were to come in that was not governed by this board, that that money would go to the charter school, so further reducing our funds within the public school system. Is that correct, Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. I'm about to come up with a better number.
That's all right.
No, your position is correct, Ms. Young. Certainly, the addition of either for-profit or even nonprofit charter institutions do have the potential and probability of siphoning away those state, or those state and local tax dollars to that particular institution. So again, that's my point, is that, you know, that will further exacerbate the fact that we already get austerity reductions, but now also we have the potential of additional taxpayer dollars going to these private charter schools.
Do we have any students going to Ivy Prep this year?
I don't think so.
And I know a couple of years ago, we had students going over there. And not only did they get the state dollars we received for those students, but they got the extra local dollars that this system had put forth for all the students. So it's not just the money we'd be getting from the states. And it's my understanding from the article that the funding mechanism for the new charter commission is one and a half times what we get per student.
Depending on who you talk to, Mr. Chairman, it's between one and a half to two and a half to three times of what our students get when you factor in a number of different variables. So again, depending on which side you talk to, that number may adjust, but there's no doubt that the state has a formally designed to a lot more state dollars to charter school students than it does to our public school students. Yes, Mr. Davis?
I did a real quick, this year's budget divided by our projection, seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars per pupil. So the seventy-eight hundred...
Mr. McKinney, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, actually, I think you answered the question I was gonna ask, which was, a charter school could be set up without us having anything proven about it? And where would the money come from? And you said state, but you also implied in your answer that it might come from the county. That's not clear yet?
They could get, they will get our local dollars. What we appropriate above the state budget is way, they will get more. Plus, they would get more state money, the way it's set up now.
Okay, thank you.
Per student, and they don't have any restriction, they don't have any requirements to take anybody but the students they want.
And in most cases, they are not governed by the same rules we are in providing a certain education, the requirements of testing, the requirements of what we are expected to provide in certain grade levels for education. So the state is basically saying, we think that we can do a better job of educating students the way we want it to happen. And even though we are an entity of the public and of the state as far as educating students, they're going to leave the local school system hanging out in the wind. Because when they take local tax dollars, which is this board's responsibility, not the state, they take that local tax dollar for that student that they have set up for a charter school. But that also affects the remaining students that we have, because that money is pooled together to be able to provide what we provide for our students. And I have no problem with the state looking at alternatives once they decide to fund us at the level they are supposed to be funding us, and they have not done that for years. When they want, when they find the dollars that they seem to have found for this charter school proposal, when they find those dollars to give back to the local school system, which they are supposed to be required to do, when they find those dollars, then I'd support them in setting up something different. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, next item is adoption of the July minutes. Do I hear a motion to adopt minutes as presented?
It's a move.
I have a motion, is that Mr. Smith? And second, by Mr. McKinney, to adopt the July minutes. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, none opposed. We have no committee reports. At this time, no, and I apologize as well, because I probably shouldn't have asked that it be shown on here. This time, I'd ask, would ask Mr. McBrayer to head up a committee made up of himself and Ms. Hotchkiss and Ms. Youngs to do a board training for our new elected members. From a board perspective, this will be in addition to what the cabinet will be doing. And I think we can draw on the expertise of our two retiring board members who have a lot of history. And good luck, Jim.
We're all ace observers, Jim.
I have no old business, we have...
Wait, 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 I didn't hear him say he'd do this.
Oh, yeah, I love that. No old business, new business, consent agenda. All these items and policies and the one through eight, we discussed extensively last week at the work session. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Youngs, second by Mr. Smith, to approve the consent agenda. Is any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, none opposed. There is no new business to discuss. We have more, no board discussion, no need for executive session.
I wanted to say someone, if that's okay. I just wanted to report as district director before, I had an opportunity to attend Newton County and DeKalb County Board Meeting. Sis Henry was with me Tuesday night at Newton County and we were, or we were able to speak to the charter school thing as well, too, that had asked us to do that. So I just wanted to report that I did attend those meetings and will attend Decatur next month as well, too.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion, we adjourn? I have a motion by Ms. Hotchkiss, second by Mr. McKinney. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, four, none opposed.